Becky, it's Mitch coming on tonight. Okay. Nope. And I can hear her perfect. I can hear, but she's pretty quiet. How do I sound? There's a couple running around on Andover right now, so. Yeah, I can hear you. What else? Should we get started or do we gotta wait for Mitch? Yep, carry whenever you're ready. All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody, to City of White Lakes' regular city council meeting Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty at six thirty. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vreeland.
Here.
Councillor Zins.
Here.
Sagler.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
All right, everybody is here tonight. Consent agenda, please.
Item three is approval of city council meeting minutes, August twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and there is a typo there. It should be September eighth. And in your meeting packet, the minutes that were in your packet have the incorrect heading on top, and those will be corrected to read September eighth as well. So with those two changes, those were just typos. Item seven is to approve the filing of correspondence as listed on your agenda. And item ten is approval of claims, payroll, and receipts.
All right, anybody have any issues with the consent agenda?
The only thing I would like to have included up the minutes from the September eighth meeting was the fact that I had voiced the, being the liaison to the campground, that I I felt that Campsite Three should not be included in the contract, and I was basically was shot down. So I would just like that to be included in the minutes so that the public are aware that I did bring it up.
Okay. Becky will make that change?
Yes, I can, um, we will amend those minutes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any concerns? If not, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by councillor Sagler. Is there support?
Support.
Or by councillor Zins. Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins.
Yes.
Sagler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland.
Yes, motion carries. Um, there's no guests or citizens for tonight, Becky, that you're aware of?
No one I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to reports from staff. Um, I see Wade is not on. Sue?
Hi, um, we opened last week, last Tuesday, and it was very exciting. It felt like Christmas morning to us. It was so much fun having people come, actually come in the door, and everybody was so happy to be back. Um, and what we're doing is people come in the southeast door, and we have it blockaded, so the restrooms can't be accessed by the public. We have signs for exit and entrance between the doors, hand sanitizer, the touchless dispenser at the, at the door to use before and after. Um, everybody's been wearing masks, everyone's been cooperating, and it's, it's been just wonderful to see the people again and how happy everybody is, including us. Um, so we've really been enjoying that. Hopefully this will last a while. Um, we're prepared if we do, if things do turn for the worse, but we're hoping that they don't. Uh, we also reopened the little free food pantry, and we started it off. We had received an anonymous donation of cash to start it off with, so we were able to supply it. And I was contacted by the AEOA today, and they are also going to drop off some meal kits, full kits for meals, um, that we can include in there. So other than that, we're just, we just keep unrolling.
Good. Nice to see you back open again. So, um, Public Works Supervisor Kenny?
All right, um, I've got a few things tonight. Um, I'll start with the, an email was sent to you guys today. It was later this afternoon, so I'm not sure if anybody had a chance to, to read it and go over it yet. Uh, I just wanted to brief you on, uh, councillor Peterson and I attended a cemetery committee meeting back in August, and we discussed a few changes that we, as in Public Works, would like to see. Um, just some, some things that, uh, would need to be amended, I guess, in the cemetery rules. Really basic changes. Um, everybody on the cemetery committee overwhelmingly agreed with, with what we had to say. They also came up with a couple other ideas, things that we were discussing regarding like the placing of memorials and/or memorial trees, um, how we would go about it. I, I thought it was good conversation, so if you guys wanna go ahead. I, I know this wasn't on the agenda, so it's nothing that'll get voted on or passed tonight, but if you guys wanna review that, anybody has any questions for me regarding it, feel free to reach out. Um, and then I guess at the next council meeting on, uh, I guess it would be the twenty-eighth. Um, if you guys, if we get it on the agenda, then you guys can go ahead and vote, I would assume, on whether or not we wanna adopt these changes in our rules. Um, so I, I was just here, like I say, I am scheduled to be on vacation that week, um, of September twenty-eighth. Uh, so I may not, may or may not be at that meeting. Um, so if anybody has any questions regarding these minutes or what's in it, feel free to reach out. I can answer anything that we have, but I think it's all pretty self-explanatory. Uh, second thing, road project, um, the order in which things will be done. I, I, I think Emily's on tonight. I'm sure she'll talk about it a little bit, um, but it sounds like they kinda changed the order in which things are gonna be done. Normally, we would be doing the concrete first. Um, the curbs are all in place. However, we're waiting on sidewalks and like driveway aprons, et cetera. Normally, they would do that before you blacktop, but, uh, the subcontractor who's doing the concrete work is, uh, didn't show last week, didn't show again today. Um, apparently, they had other, other conflicts come up or whatever. Um, so Masabi Batuminus, in wanting to keep the project rolling, um, so we don't get too far behind, is going to come and place the first lift of blacktop tomorrow. Um, I had some conversation last week in our construction meeting. I was advised that it wouldn't affect school buses early on in the school year, and then I was informed first thing this morning that it would, in fact. Um, all five streets that are affected in this road construction project will need to be closed tomorrow for any kind of travel, so, uh, I got ahold of Brian Chapman with the school. We came up with some alternate bus stop locations for the kids, so in the morning, uh, anybody who's tuning into this tonight, anybody who's affected should have been notified, and the, if you live within the construction zone, I guess you're, you're gonna have, your kids will have to go a half a block or so to one of the nearest bus stops that's out of the construction zone, both tomorrow morning and tomorrow afternoon. Um, next thing, uh, city hall renovation.
Kenny, let's let, uh, Emily jump in.
Okay.
On the road project. I don't think you're on the agenda for anything else tonight, are you, Emily?
I am not, other than, um, if anything comes up with the, uh, building contract. The, um, oh, where is it? My computer doesn't wanna scroll now. Item E, the city hall remodel.
Oh, okay. Well, let's talk about, do you have anything else for the road project?
Um, no, I don't. Um, I think Penny pretty much covered it. Um, the only thing that I'll add is some of you know already by now is I am in the process of transferring to our Grand Rapids office. So, um, I, I am still available for questions. I'm still available for anything that comes up with construction. Um, but I am in the process of, of moving over to Grand Rapids, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you to everybody at White Lakes. Um, I've really enjoyed working for White Lakes over the years that I've been in the Virginia office, so, um, just wanted to say thanks, and, um, with that, if anybody has any questions, I can answer those.
And any questions for Emily? Okay, Kenny, I'll let you continue.
Okay, and I can, uh, brief on the city hall renovation project. She may have been going to touch on that as well. Um, we had a construction, pre-construction meeting last Wednesday morning regarding that. Um, a little bit of good news that came out of it, um, I think there was some misunderstanding or confusion in the beginning with the architect and the supplier of the office doors going into the city hall office areas are going to be getting a card access for security reasons. Um, the architect was under the understanding that, uh, new doors were going to be required, that the card reader systems would be able to be retrofitted to our current doors. Uh, I found out from the supplier of that equipment that that wasn't the case. We can reuse our doors, which is a good thing. It's, it's, uh, that way, nothing will take place in the hallway area where like the mayor's office and meeting room is at, so there'll be no painting required or anything being changed there. Um, we should see a positive, uh, change in, in the price, um, for the project. However, the, the card access reader stuff, there, there may be a couple pieces of equipment that is involved, so overall, I think it'll still be a substantial savings on the price of the project. Um, Lancy, the general contractor, was, um, given the contract to sign by S E H. I think it was late last week. I believe that all took place today. I was included on some emails, and Becky may wanna elaborate on it, I, I believe, uh, or Mitch, even if he's on, um, regarding the amount of insurance required or whatever. I saw that come through in an email today. But other than that, uh, the city hall renovation project should be starting soon. Uh, they, Lancy was apprehensive to order the materials until that contract was signed, um, which it is now, so they'll get the materials, they'll get started here soon. And, uh, they expected it to take about a month, so if they were, if they were doing, uh, work by the end of September, they should be done by the end of October, first of November-ish. So everything that came out of that meeting seemed, you know, positive. Everybody got to meet and get on the same page, and, and all that's good. Uh, after that meeting that day, I met with, uh, there's been some talk, um, Minnesota Power, the Midway Project, if in fact we were to change locations and relocate the Beer Garden Project, if in fact that is what we do. Um, there was questions on relocating power lines, so I met with, uh, Brian Clement from Minnesota Power. He's putting together some quotes on what that will cost, and he'll be getting back to me with those numbers. Um, that's about it, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Anything for Kenny? Okay, thanks, Kenny.
Yeah.
Public Utility Supervisor Jake?
Yeah, well, the painters are on site at the water plant. They, uh, sandblasted and pressure washed the building. They started putting on the, the primer today, so great they're going. They might finish up this week or next, depending on weather. Um, also, starting September twenty-first, and I'm gonna give them till October second, we're gonna be flushing hydrants in town. It's that time of year again where we gotta start getting ready for winter operations. So it's about all I got right now.
Okay, anything for Jake? Thanks, Jake. Um, Amel's director, Mel?
Oh, um, August, we had eighty-seven runs. Um, a little bit drunk from the month before, but we're still moving up. Um, able to get two transfers out at Northern Pines during the night at the same times. That's, that's good. Our staffing schedule seems to be working. Um, we are interviewing an EMT-only position next week. Uh, other than that, I don't have much, unless anyone has anything for me.
Anything, anything for Mel? Okay. City Clerk Treasurer Becky?
Nothing right now, being my sound is iffy. Thank you.
Okay, and City Attorney Brundfeld, Mitch?
Yeah, Mayor Council, uh, just a couple of agenda items. I'll just weigh in on now, just real quick, so you're aware of this. On old business, item eight D, the storage lots, the resolutions, those are all ready to go. Obviously, those were prepared by Joel from my office. I reviewed those, and the resolutions to authorize conveyance of those, uh, parcels are ready to go. And then on the city hall remodel, uh, I did review the Lancy contract, uh, and that's all set to go. Uh, the insurance amounts are corrected, so they, they're, the appropriate insurance amounts are in there now, and that Lancy contract is, uh, is good to go, so that's ready for your approval tonight. So just wanna let you know on those couple of items, and then that's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll jump down to reports from city council. Uh, councillor Zins?
Um, nothing to report tonight.
Okay, councillor Sagler?
I've got a couple of things on, obviously, the ice is on. Four-on-four started yesterday. I talked to Supervisor West this afternoon, and he said everything went spectacular. He's wanted to thank the youth hockey board and the parents for stepping up and doing the sanitizing between games. He said everyone was wearing their masks, and there was no one complaining, so he said it went very well. Um, Lasabe East Rec creation, we've got numerous different activities for the kids. We've got Disc Golf, uh, beach volleyball, flag football. I can't remember the exact age groups, but that should all be available through the school now, so that's gonna start, I believe, this Saturday for certain events. So that's everything I've got for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Pop?
Okay, just a couple things. Uh, getting to be the fall of the year, some of the, the meetings are, are picking back up again. Last week, I called into the Eastern Cap meeting. Uh, it was quite poorly attended, actually. I think there was probably only about seven or eight of us total on, that had called into the meeting, but, uh, did get some updates, uh, the polymet update. Uh, we did hear that one of the permits was reinstated, but then the environmental people went ahead and, and, uh, filed a, a protest against that right away, so they're, they're still gonna have to throw it back into court, so I guess the biggest update there is it looked like everything is gonna be at least until the end of next year before they're gonna get anything somewhat finalized, and then, and then if the rulings come back in the wrong direction for the environmentalists, it, it might still be contested even further, so. And then they explained a little bit. I don't know if the, the council was aware of the, the big stock price change that happened there on PolyMet, so they, they did a reverse adjustment on the stock. The stock price was getting so low that they, they were in jeopardy of being basically kicked out of the New York Stock Exchange. I guess the price needs to be above a certain level, so. So bottom line, what happened, I guess the easiest way to explain it, so if you own stock and you own three hundred shares at forty cents a share, you now own thirty shares at three dollars and forty cents a share, so the value of the stock is still the same. It's just the amount of shares is less, so. Uh, and then the other thing, there was some encouraging news from WABIC. They said their, their home sales and inquiries into the, the home market up at the, uh, uh, the area around Giants Ridge and, and the lake there, that, that had like eight or nine new, new home sales in that area or lot sales, so. So with the, with the quarantine and, and people realizing that they can work from home, they, they felt that that maybe had a positive impact, and things were going really well up at the ridge. The bike, the bike, uh, both the mountain biking and the, uh, the downhill biking has been real popular through the, through the summer up there, so. And then today, I called into a WebEx meeting, and I can say I'm really glad that we decided to go with Zoom rather than WebEx, because I basically heard maybe about every fourth or fifth word. The connections were terrible, but, uh, so the bronze field, uh, the EPA cycle for grants is coming due here at the end of October, so there was basically a discussion on how to proceed, because last year, the group was not approved for a grant, and they were looking at different options to which way they possibly could go to improve their chances. Well, again, the attendance was very poor. I think it was myself, a couple of representatives from uh, Northern Technical Services, a gentleman from Ely, and so about five or six of us, so it was not very well attended. They're gonna try to set up another meeting for Thursday that will hopefully be attended better. But I put our input in there, that being that we still had a couple projects going on here in White Lakes, that we would like to continue with the coalition with only including cities that had active projects. I guess there were a total of thirteen or fourteen cities in there, but there was only six or seven of them that had act, actual, active projects, and so basically the, what they're looking is trying to improve the chances of, of getting that grant, so. So we'll keep you posted on anything further that comes up there, and that's it.
All right, thank you, Dan. Uh, councillor Peterson?
I have nothing for tonight.
Okay, um, I got, uh, I got just the one thing. I'm on vacation next week. Dan, are you, you're gonna be able to do that Eastern Joint Powers Board meeting next Tuesday? I think it's still the twenty-second, isn't it?
I believe. Is it the last Tuesday of the month or the second to last Tuesday?
Well, it's the fourth, which would be the twenty-second, and there was some talk about it might be moved to the twenty-ninth. Before I leave Friday, we'll get that straightened out, okay?
Yeah, I will. Yeah, I'll be back by the, by that Tuesday morning, so I can cover for you. Just give me any insight as to, as to, you'd be, need to be privy to. I know I haven't called into the last couple, so.
Well, let's jump down to old business and A, coronavirus relay funds. Becky?
Uh, um, in your packet are, um, some Excel spreadsheets of what, um, I have researched and what we would like to request the council to approve. And, um, at the budget meeting, the council referred this to the city attorney for review, and I did speak with the city attorney today. Um, we do have everything documented, um, invoices on all purchases, and I guess he could, Mitch, you can speak up to that you thought they were viable, uh, purchases?
Right, yeah, mayor and council, uh, I, I talked at length with Becky today about this. Uh, we went through the, the various items, and, um, and, you know, based upon the information she provided, I felt that there was a strong foundation and, uh, you know, a very articulable, uh, explanation and rationale for how each one of these items are specifically tied to a response to uh, COVID and, and to mitigate the risks associated with COVID, and, and even those things that, um, you know, just for example, would be, uh, would be maybe things that arguably were, were things that the city council budgeted for in two thousand and twenty, you know, when you were doing your two thousand and twenty budget way back near the end of two thousand and nineteen, before we knew anything about COVID nineteen, and you were putting this budget together, uh, and maybe some of these items would be budgeted items. Uh, for example, on, on certain payroll expenses. Uh, for example, on, on certain payroll expenses. Well, obviously you, 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 uh, in two thousand twenty, your two thousand twenty budget incorporates, you know, full budgeting for all your anticipated payroll expenses. Uh, however, you, you, you also have a large amount of payroll that was expended relative to the pandemic where you expended a large amount of payroll basically to pay people to stay at home. Uh, you know, essentially that was part of the mitigation efforts to make sure that the city was able to maintain proper social distancing for its employees. And with the staggered shifts and also with any employees who may have been eligible for paid leave time under the federal coronavirus response act. You did have a fair amount of payroll expenses that were specifically tied to COVID where you were essentially paying a person uh, to stay home, uh, due to COVID, uh, issues or in order to mitigate or counter the risks of COVID. So, you know, based upon that detailed discussion I had with Becky, I'm comfortable that the items that are indicated here are legitimate expenditures of that, uh, of that state funding money. Uh, and the other thing that's important as I talked to Becky about the, it's very important to have backup documentation. Uh, you know, that, that we can, that we have a backup documentation in her files to show how these, uh, specific expenditures are COVID related expenditures. And based upon what she described to me and the record keeping that they have maintained on this, I feel comfortable that that we have the appropriate documentation to support all this. So with regard to what's presented, um, you know, my assessment of it is I'm fine with it.
Okay, any questions for Mitch? Okay, so Becky's looking for a motion tonight to approve this. And if you, if you look at the second page on there, um, council Zins and myself were just at an East Range Police meeting here before this. And Becky has under the pending documentation and Tim's not sure if he'll get to twenty. But he does have documentation on some new lockers and second sets of uniforms bought in case one of his officers, uh, gets involved in a situation they gotta change. So, um, I'm looking for a motion to approve, to approve her list here. And then like I said, the only thing on there would be, East, East Range PD would be pending documentation. So.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion by council Peterson. Is there support?
I'll support.
Or by council Zins. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Council Zins.
Yes.
Siedler?
Yes.
Pop?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes, motion carries. Um, going down to item B, pass new water bills. Um, I'd like to thank council pop on this. He found this league. Uh, Governor Walls has got a hundred million dollars and to help people pay for the rent and utilities are part of this. So Dan, did I read this correctly? That this is gonna go to all the people that are delinquent on the accounts?
Yeah, I believe in the info Becky sent out is that she was going to be mailing a copy of this application or information to get to the application to all the, the delinquent accounts. So hopefully, hopefully there'll still be some funds there and we'll be able to recoup some of that, that money that we're behind on.
And the other thing with this, um, I did read this quite a bit. We still legally cannot shut people's water off. We're, we're charging them, uh, they're getting the late fees when they're behind, but we still can't, can't shut off according to, uh, Governor Walls's emergency. Mitch, have you, did you see that part of that too?
Uh, no, mayor, I didn't. But I, in this, e- e- despite that, I, in this stage, I would, I, I would even, I would still recommend that you not do shut offs.
Okay.
Because of the things, but, but yeah.
Okay. Now Becky, we don't need any motion on this. This was just for information tonight?
Right.
Any, any council got any questions on this? Okay, all right. We'll move on to, uh, item C. The last council meeting, uh, council gave me authority to get a quote. Uh, Benchmark Engineering has done a lot of surveying in town. I thought the, I thought the number was actually pretty good. Um, this is for the back lots on Leeds. Uh, I, I, I had a long discussion with, uh, with Anthony Paulshick. Uh, it's lo- it's lots three, four and five. And there's actually twenty five lots, cause there's five lots farther to the east that are also qualify for this. So what they'll do is they'll come in and, and if, if you read it, they'll, they'll pin it and they'll mark off all twenty five lots that we could put up for sale. So I guess the question I have for the council tonight is what are we thinking those lots should go for? The front ones went for fifteen hundred a lot. Just my, kind of my thought was, you know, maybe a thousand dollars a lot and then we would offer them to the homeowner in front first. So um, if, if let, let's say we agreed to a five, to a thousand, if we sold them all, we'd make almost twenty thousand dollars on it. So and then they go on the tax rolls. So.
I guess one comment I'd like to make on that, Chris, do you know, or maybe Becky, do you know what the, the realtor costs are on that? I, I think we're gonna lose almost five hundred dollars per, per sale to the realtor. So I'm wondering if we would wanna keep it at fifteen hundred.
Well, my, my question to you on that, Dan, is do we need to use a realtor? Cause basically we'll be writing a letter to the person that owns a lot in front. It's not like the realtor is gonna advertise them. You know what I mean? My thoughts is do we just write a letter to the, to the homeowner in front of it? Cause they're the only ones that are gonna be able to buy it. Cause there, there'll be no access unless you, uh, own the lot in front. What's your thought on that?
Yeah, that's, that's a good thought. I didn't even think of that option. So, yeah. So those, those people that own the, the lots front would probably be the only ones that and maybe those should be the only people that we offer them to also.
It's a good idea. I don't think we need to discuss that. Then I'd like the council just to think about that tonight. The only thing I need tonight is approval on this, on this so bench benchmark can start, uh, doing the surveying. I have been contacted by five lot owners that say they really wanna buy the lot behind it. So it can be a good way for us to make a little bit of money, but then also get some more property on the tax roll. So can I get a motion on, uh, to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by council Siedler, support?
I'll support that.
Support by council pop. Any other discussion?
Would that dollar figure please be added to that motion?
The motion would be five thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll amend my motion to include that price.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Council Zins.
Yes.
Siedler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes, motion carries. Item D, storage lots. Um, what do we have to, what are we, we're just looking to approve the sale of these tonight?
So good, just to, just to prove each of the resolutions. And you're all, you're gonna be go.
Mitch, can, once should we have to do them separately?
Um, I think you could probably just, you could probably just pass them as a group, just one, one motion to go ahead and approve all three of them.
Okay, I'll make the motion to, uh, approve resolution twenty twenty dash zero two six, zero two seven and zero two eight.
Okay. There's support?
I'll support.
Work by council Peterson. Any other discussion? Uh, the only thing I'll mention is that's we've sold five of those twelve. I think if we sell three or four more, if you look on the map that we, that Becky provided, there's, uh, three, six, nine more on the other side that are kind of laid out, but they'd have to be surveyed. Um, they, they weren't actually pinned at the time. So. Uh, please.
Council Zins?
Yes.
Siedler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes, motion carries. Moving to item E, city hall remodel, Lency. This is just the contract. We gotta approve this contract. Is that correct?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions on it? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by council Zins. Is there support? I'll support it. Uh, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Council Zins?
Yes.
Siedler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes, motion carries. Moving to new business, fall garbage pickup. Council pop.
Uh, yes, fall is, is rolled around quickly. I know we talked about this, uh, in the spring, how well it was utilized. Uh, we've had some discussion with trying to get, I think we've made some really good progress with some of our delighted areas in town. We have some, some work to do on some more, but, uh, I guess I would like to, to be able to have another fall cleanup and we could even incorporate in with that. I haven't talked to Public Works Supervisor. It's not saying her about this, but maybe even go so far as to do a, a second pickup for, for appliances and, you know, the other mill re- related items with that to, uh, to help utilize that. And, and we were kinda gonna probably use this as some pressure to to, this is the last straw for some of the people that were having a hard time get into compliance on their bite issues that if they, if they didn't utilize this cleanup, that then we would have to come in and do the cleanup with the city crew and it would be a lot more expensive. So it's a, it's an item that's, that's not terribly expensive. I think it probably cost us, uh, we budgeted about ten thousand dollars for in this, this year, I think the first one between the pickup charges and the, the, the tonnage, I think it probably was less than fifteen hundred dollars. So if we do have it, I would like to wait until the Suffolk project is, is completely tarred. So the whole community can, can take advantage of it. So.
You're reading my mind, Dan. That's exactly what I said. Why don't you and Kenny get together and come up with a proposal for the twenty eighth, the next meeting? Uh, and I would imagine we probably wanna do it in October. That'll give us a chance to have a plan in front of us. Does that sound all right?
That's, yeah, that sounds perfect.
Anybody else got any questions or comments?
Hey, are we gonna try to solicit some, uh, community volunteers to help, like, to advertise that if people need help, that they'll be a I know, Chris, you have a volunteer group that you guys do stuff. Will we do that for these people?
I think we can. I think I can get a group of guys together in early October, you know?
And if I'm around, I'll absolutely help. I mean, it's not a problem, but.
The biggest thing, biggest thing my, my volunteer crew was doing was raking for elderly citizens that couldn't do it. And and, uh, so, yeah, we can, we'll advertise it. I think, uh, since Sue was still on there, that's something we can put on the, put on the, uh, new sign here. Uh, the end of the month and, and.
Yeah.
Uh, good idea.
I think once we pick a date, I think it would be, like you said, Brian, it'd be very advantageous to put some ads in the shopper and get some messages going on the sign that we'll come up with a phone number for the elderly to call that can't, you know, that aren't able to get stuff out to the curb that we can come up with a crew to help. So I think that's, that's a great idea.
And what we did last time, Dan, was, uh, we just had them call city hall and Betsy and Tammy or Becky would just get a list for us, for me, and I, I would come down and I'd get a crew lined up. So I think, let's try to have all this kind of in, be, be ready to go for the next meeting. Okay?
Right.
Yeah, just, just a heads up, Chris, uh, some of the conversations I was involved in today with the, uh, road construction meeting, if we are looking at substantial completion of this project, um, such as your boulevard area and everything, I think you're gonna be looking at, uh, third or fourth week of October. So it's gonna be a little bit later than the beginning of October.
Right. The only thing is I think if the blacktop is down, we could, you know, but if the roads are still closed too. So well, we'll have, I think we'll have a better handle by the end of September.
Uh, it, it doesn't matter to me either way. I just didn't know about the boulevard area. If we're gonna be in the way of, uh, the construction workers doing their job.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you. Okay. Um, all right, I'm moving to item B, wastewater treatment facility, PFA loan finalization. There's, there's, uh, uh, and something in your packet here, what the final grants were. I think we came out of it really well. Brian, you're on. I'm gonna let you talk about this. I know there's been a few things changing here recently.
Yeah, we've been working with PFA, trying to get this in kinda to, into this meeting and, and so we got some now, so what I wanna do tonight is, is kinda have this as a draft resolution for you guys to think about and have comments. And then probably come back and, and we'll actually pass it on the twenty eighth when we get a little bit more time, uh, to get input from Shannon Sweeney. Probably have, uh, attorney Brunfeld take a look at it too. Um, but so just to kinda run down this, the final terms of the loan, um, we received here are an endless resolution, uh, approximately one point eight for the loan, uh, three point three million for the, uh, whiff grant and then seven million for the P S A grant. Um, and since the city's receiving these grants, there's some other requirements that come along with PFA. And, and we'll kinda go through those, um, in the items here. Now, just to clarify, do you guys have the copy? You don't have the copy with comments from PFA, do you?
I don't think so.
Mayor, you have the redlined one I gave you. That's what he's talking about. And the council, I don't know if they had time to open that email being it came later tonight.
Well, I think just give us a rundown, Brian, and, and then we'll have time to, to look at it for the next meeting.
Yeah, so, um, so, uh, Shannon Sweeney with, uh, David Drone has been going through the cash flow piece best. And has come up with a final flat rate of fifty eight dollars and forty seven cents, um, for the residential connections. I believe right now you're at about forty seven dollars. I don't know the exact, exact amount, but I believe it's around forty seven. And so it's about eleven dollar increase. Um, and some of the things that went into that above and beyond the debt service are, um, they're, they're requiring a water infrastructure fund reserve, which is fifty cents per thousand gallons of treated sewage. Um, now, since you guys don't have meters, uh, what we've done there is used the average usage from a residential user of thirty five hundred gallons a month. And if we do fifty cents per thousand, that would be a dollar and seventy five cents per month on the flat rate. Um, since you meter commercial, that would actually be charged at the fifty cents per thousand. So that's an extra fund um, that you need to maintain and will be audited by PFA. And then that can be used for future needs for the wastewater system. Uh, the other part of this, and I know there was conversation about this previously, was, uh, an equipment replacement reserve, which is, um, more of a short term asset replacement reserve. Um, and now this, a fund amount was determined based on your average yearly needs over a twenty year life cycle of equipment. And then also looking at your normal CIP usage for what Jake may spend at the plant for miscellaneous repairs. So this amount was budgeted and then this went into the grant calculation for how much grant you got. And so the city of fifty five for your budgeted for some equipment. And so basically what PFA is doing here is they wanna position the city to have reserves to take care of future equipment replacement needs. So as pumps go out, um, any equipment, any type of routine maintenance, um, you know, even computer upgrades, all that type of stuff would be paid for out of this fund. And so they want to set the city up to have that fund moving forward. Now this fund is not intended to say you get a new limit in twenty years and you need to expand the facility. That's not what this fund is for. But their goal is, is to get you guys to budget for that equipment replacement down the road. Um, and so if you think about it, over twenty years, fifty thousand a year, that's a million dollars in twenty years. So in twenty years, when a bunch of equipment is at an age for replacement, you may have a small, what I'll call small for wastewater. It's not a small project, but a million dollar project to go through and replace a bunch of equipment. Now the city has the ability to do that within your own fund reserves rather than having to go out and find, find reserves. So that's, that's what the purpose of that budget is for. And when we work in that, um, replacement reserve plus the fifty cents per thousand gallons, again, that turned into a, a base rate increase of a dollar and seventy five per month. Those things are all included in that residential rate of the fifty eight forty seven. Um, so that's kinda the general of the first resolution I had in there. We received some comments back from PFA late this afternoon. Um, and they, basically they wanted to be a little bit more specific in the resolution. And so in terms of increasing rates, really your, your loan payments are not gonna start for a couple of years yet. And so we had stated in there to raise the rates by twenty twenty two. And so we had stated in there to raise the rates by twenty twenty-two. They were looking specifically for when are they gonna be raised and how much are they gonna be raised? And so would there be a raise in rates in twenty twenty-one? Maybe say half the way to where you need to be, and then in twenty twenty-two, do the second half of the, the rate increase. Um, and that's something we can, you guys can comment on, and we can surely work with Shannon on too about how you guys wanna step into that rate. Um, so that was kinda the, some of the main things they wanted by their comments, with some more specifics about how these funds are used, how they're, how the funds are set aside, and then how those rates are gonna be increased. Um, and so those are the things we need to kinda work through and have everybody comfortable with, so when we come back in two weeks, we can approve the resolution. Once the resolution's approved, they'll write the agreement, and then at the probably first October meeting, we'd sign, sign the agreement on the loan. Um.
I, I like that idea, but I, I also think it's good to spread those increases over, even if we can do it over a three years or you know, maybe the first of this year, the first of next year, and later on, and so people don't get a eleven dollar a month increase if we can do three or four, you know, twice, and, and I think that's a very good idea, cause we won't need all the money till then, and then what that also does, it helps us build a little bit of reserve into that account. You know, into that loan fund, we'd ac- actually have some money in there before we got going, so.
Right.
Any, any council have any comments or questions for Brian?
Brian, would you recommend we do it like in, in two phases or three? I mean, we've got obviously the twenty twenty-one budget we're setting now, or it's rates we're setting now, so is it your recommendation, we do half now and half next year?
Um, now, when I think, I've just gotta talk through the construction schedule, so I don't mix up years. Uh, completion of the project and final payment is set for fall of twenty twenty-two, and so realistically, your first payment will be close to twenty twenty-three. So I think you could look at a three-year step, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and then twenty twenty-three would be the final step, and we could, um, definitely use a three-years, uh, frame there, and we could propose that to PFA to make sure they were okay with it. Um, so I think, I, I guess if this is agreeable, um, I will attempt to put it into three equal steps over the next three years, and I will present that to PFA. Um, and if they think we need to cut it to two years to have the ra- the rates there prior to the project ending, then we'll split it equally into two years. Does that, does that work?
That sounds fair to me.
Okay, sounds very good. Okay, anything else, Brian?
Uh, no, I don't think so. We'll, um, we'll work through these details, um, city attorney Brunfeld, is he?
Yeah.
Um, Mitch, I think, uh, I'd assume you wanna take a look at this, uh, resolution, um, PFA's, you know, thrown some language in here, they wanted to be a little bit more, um, I don't wanna call it strict, but a little more direct on what's in here. Um, and so we'll get you, we'll get you a copy here in a couple of days, once we get all their comments, just for you to take a look at.
Yep, okay, no problem.
All right, thank you, thank you, Brian. Uh, anybody else, anybody have anything else tonight? If not?
Adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Counsel Segler, support?
Support.
Worked by Counsel Peterson, roll call, please.
Counsel Zins?
Yes.
Seigler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes, uh, good night, remember EDA.
Okay.
Nuling?
Right away for council. Good night, everybody. What's that?
We'll see you in a couple minutes.